Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to Easthamfield Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and on Zoom with login and call-in information posted on our website. If you're calling in to meet, we'd encourage you to remain on the call. But it also goes to attach the website by going to Easthamfield Township and then log on to our Zoom meeting following instructions on our homepage. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded. For tonight's meeting, Robert's rules will apply. The meeting will be run by the chairman, who will be assisted by an employee made from the Zoom site. Everyone on Zoom will have their microphones muted in order for the audio to be heard clearly. During the meeting, both those present online, only one person at a time speaks, and they must be recognized by the chairman. Many people speak at the same time, combine a background noise to make things impossible here on Zoom. This will be strictly enforced. For people utilizing Zoom, you'll need to use the chat function to be recognized by a chairman. To be recognized through the chat function, you must be either a presenter who's on the agenda or a resident or business owner in Easthamfield Township, which is to comment on an agenda item where you must text your name and address. Your request will be to speak, or it may pass off by staff to the chairman and be recognized. The steps to speak you are using Zoom are simple. Request recognition by the chairman via chat to speed.
Once recognized by a chairman, unmute your microphone.
After receiving permission, speak. When done speaking, mute your microphone.
For Zoom, any violations of the mentioned rules will be deemed to be acting out of order, and your microphone will be muted without warning. Continuing violations will result in you being electronically removed from the meeting. Robert's rules apply for those attending and meeting in person. All voting tonight will be done by roll call vote to ensure all votes are properly accounted for. Roll call will be conducted by a township manager. There will be no action taken on any non-agenda items of a non-emergency, non-urgent nature that arise during the meeting. All such items will be referred to staff and will be later added at a meeting. Easthamfield Township's public comment rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner or township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking and signing the guest log for meeting purposes or follow the chat procedure already discussed. Comment is limited to three minutes. It must be about the agenda item being discussed with the exception of the public comment at the end of the meeting for non-agenda items. And no action will be taken during public comment period for non-agenda items with all issues referred to staff. So with that, I'd ask everybody to rise for a moment, silence, and the pledge. Now the pledge.
That we lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Maybe see. Well, before I move on to our first agenda item, I want to acknowledge that we did have an incident in our township involving Spooky Knuck Sports. And I wanted to give some praise to the efforts of both our police department, our first responders fire department, Diane Garber. Chief Skiles, he did a wonderful, wonderful job responding to that. And luckily, we were blessed that there was no actually serious injuries and that there was, as appears right now to, have not been a gunshot fired, although that's still being reviewed. I think it would be appropriate to take a moment as we recognize the importance of police. I'd like to revisit an article that we wrote last year in the fall about policing. I'm not going to read the whole article, but I'm going to just highlight a couple of things. Since its creation in 1963, Easthamfield Township's Police Department has strived to be a premier community-based law enforcement agency within Lancaster County. Our department currently consists of thirty-four police officers that includes a school resource officer, a drug task force officer, and a key nine officer. Our police department, like so many others, continues to be an example of professionalism in public service that deserves to be highlighted. In terms of crime, our township is a very safe place to work, live, and play. Since 2015, the township has experienced a thirty-nine percent decrease in Part One crime offenses, which are serious, while seeing a manageable growth of new commercial and residential projects and an increase in road miles. Additionally, there was an eight-point-seven percent decrease in Part One offenses between 2018 and 19, with ninety-six percent of those crimes being property-related rather than crimes of violence against people. In terms of traffic safety, officers responded to less crashes in 2019 than the previous year, and the number of speeding violations was down even though the officers conducted more speed enforcement details at locations identified through resident complaints or speed studies. We appear to be reaping the rewards of ongoing traffic enforcement education. While there are many factors that impact crime trends, we must all acknowledge that our officers are succeeding in their efforts. Expectations placed upon police officers seem to grow each day. Since they are twenty-four-seven to face the local government, society expects much from our profession, sometimes too much. In addition to addressing crime and traffic problems, police officers must respond to mental health, addiction, domestic violence, parenting, and myriad of social and societal issues. Even though they cannot be experts in every social and behavioral health topic, police officers must be trained to handle or at least triage many calls for service. Our officers receive regular and ongoing training in crisis management, first aid, de-escalation, child abuse, use of force, drug use, mental health, and many others. The Easthamfield Township Police Department has a policy requirement to guide the types of frequency for these trainings. In addition, officers receive relevant training in areas such as supervision, management, leadership, DUI, traffic enforcement, firearms, labor law, criminal law, and much more. Use of force in policing has increasingly come under public scrutiny, and agencies are rightly held accountable for lack of training or policy. It's important to note that our department's use of force policy complies with the national consensus policy on the use of force and meets state accreditation's and best practice standards. Department's policy is grounded in the state and federal law and already meets standards being called under police reform. The Easthamfield Township Police Department Department debarcements investigates and reviews every use of force and ensures that it complies with policy. In addition, annual weapons qualifications policy review testing is required by officers. Our officers also receive mandatory training on explicit bias and de-escalation techniques. While the use of force is necessary in some instances, our department strives to ensure that its application is reasonable and consistent with policy and training. As the debate rages across the country about policing, it is important to remember that a supermajority of the police departments and their officers are similar to the Easthamfield Township Police Department, selflessly serving their communities without fanfare or accolades. Easthamfield Township Police Department is fully supported by the local officials and residents with sound community policies and is properly funded and trained to meet the needs of our township now and into the future. Our community is a safe place to live and work in. I am proud of our officers, and you should be too. That was written in our Fall 2020 Newsletter. And it's still very applicable today and was on display with how the police responded and first responders with our fire and EMS responded, as well as state and everybody else that came to help at Spooky Knuck. It was an example of professionalism that we got, are able to respond that way. And I will just state for me personally as a supervisor, I will never support any efforts in this township to defund or reduce funding of our police department. That's wrong policy-wise, and that leans a lot of the problems we have today. And that's something that cannot occur in this township.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Purpose of the consent agenda is to adopt routine items usually require very little debate or discussions. With that, I will open up the floor to our consent agenda. Okay, we are going to have to break this vote up into two parts because I am conflicted on the invoices. So I will entertain a motion to adopt our consent agenda minus item number C invoices. Okay, motion from Mr. LaFever. Do I have a second? Second from Mr. Bennett. Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Bennett.
Hi.
Mr. LaFever.
Hi.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Hi.
Mr. Russell.
Hi. The eyes have it four to nothing, and did we just note that Mr. Weaver is absent today for personal reasons? Next up, we will have the consent agenda IMC. I will entertain a motion to adopt item C.
So move.
Motion for Mr. Wigglesworth. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bennett. Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Bennett.
Hi.
Mr. LaFever.
Hi.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Hi.
Mr. Russell.
Epstein. So we have three votes in the favor and one abstention, Mr. Russell. Next up, we will move on to our action items, development services. And the first thing we have is authorization to request developers' installation of sidewalk trails along Stony Battery Road. I don't know if that's Ms. Switzer or Mr. Beck. Mr. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you gentlemen tonight, staff is preparing for the first part of the Stony Battery Road trail that goes from Nolt Road all the way up to Kaufman, which is primarily used for students to get to school. The request before you tonight is to call in the deferments for the project associated for the sidewalk trail associated with the project as known as Stony Battery Road Self-Storage. That's at five eighty-one Stony Battery Road and the adjacent property at six oh one Stony Battery Road. With that being said, respectfully request the board to authorize staff to send notice to those property owners, developers, that we, that the township has authorized to call in of those deferments.
Okay, is there any discussion of the board? Just a quick question. Isn't, isn't there another track of land there that's involved in this trail and sidewalk issue, seven oh one?
Yes, and they're currently under construction. The Catalyst Commercial Development actually informed me that they will be selling the property to Highview, or I believe it's Highview, which owns the property at six oh one. So at the same time that we're trying to call in the deferment for six oh one, the economy's scale will work in benefit for us where the developers for six oh one can install the, the trail at the same time for seven oh one.
So seven oh one will go in at the same time?
Yes.
Just not listed here.
That is correct because they did not get a deferment for the simple fact that they are under construction.
Thank you.
Mr. Bennett, I should also say that's the exact same thing we're going to do with seven ninety-one when they come back before the board for approval for funding and security and agreements.
So I'd just like to say that I'm glad to see this. I think the whole board has wanted to see it for a long time, so it's, it's a good thing for the community. It's definitely a good thing for the students, and it will make Stony Battery a safer road.
Any discussion from the audience? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to call in the sidewalk deferments for Stony Battery Self-Storage Final Plan Township number fifteen dash seventeen at five eighty-one Stony Battery Road and for six oh one Stony Battery Road Final Township Plan eighteen dash zero six at six oh one Stony Battery Road.
So move.
Okay, motion for Mr. Wigglesworth and second from the chair. Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Bennett.
Hi.
Mr. LaFever.
Hi.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Hi.
Mr. Russell.
Hi. The eyes have it four nothing. Next up, we have rezoning to land, tracks of land on Nistley Road, nine oh eight Nistley Road, seventeen acres and four-point-seven acres owned by the township from low-density residential to recreation open space. Seeking authorization to submit to the planning agencies into adopt, advertise for adoption of consideration. Mr. Beck.
For you gentlemen tonight, a simply authorization, basically acknowledgement and authorization to, for staff to send this zoning map amendment on to the county planning commission and the township planning commission for their review and recommendations, and then also authorization to advertise for a future meeting for potential adoption.
Any discussion on the board?
I'd just like to speak to it a little bit. Part of this is coming about because we're taking a look at stormwater improvements, and this is a tract of property that the township owns and has the ability to put a stormwater facility on, on one of the parcels. And in addition, there had been talk many years ago, I think this predates me from being on the board, about possibly having, selling this property to be developed, and that was soundly objected to by the residents. I think rezoning this indicates that the long-term plan is this will not be developed. It also sends a good message to the community and to future developers as well that, that this property is not going to be developed. It would also, if it's rezoned, require action from some future board if they so desire to develop it for whatever reason down the road. It would require rezoning action, which I think is appropriate. So for those reasons, I would be supportive of advertising this and moving it along in the process.
Okay, well, that kind of sounds like a motion unless somebody else has any comments at this point.
How is this tract maintained at this time?
Township and farming.
Okay, we have farming operation, and that would no doubt continue?
More than likely, yeah. It's just basically changing the zoning and really not changing anything else at this point. And there'd be some other, just going to be some other discussions about possible municipal uses, but it's, as Mr. Wigglesworth has stated. Remember, so we've been talking about for stormwater, a couple of other things currently at that location, too.
Those municipal uses would be so significant that all the procedures of zoning and things would, of course, need to be addressed.
So seeing none, we have a motion for Mr. Wigglesworth. Is there a second? Second for Mr. LaFever. Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Bennett.
Hi.
Mr. LaFever.
Hi.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Hi.
Mr. Russell.
Hi. The eyes have it four nothing. Next up, we have golf carts seeking authorization to prepare and bid the lease purchase of a new fleet of golf carts for Four Seasons within April twenty-two, two thousand twenty delivery. Ms. Switzer.
So the golf carts at Four Seasons have run their course. Their batteries are wearing out. Their mechanisms are wearing out. Their tires are wearing out. It's time for replacement of the fleet. We sent this to the Recreation Authority for recommendation. They have come back after Jim Michael Cabbage presented a proposal to replace all seventy-two of the carts. We currently have sixty-two electric carts and about ten gas carts, which are, the gas carts are about ten years old, or fifteen. The Recreation Authority is recommending that the board supervisor is authorized to move forward and put the bids out for consideration sometime in September so that we can meet our April twenty-twenty-two delivery for the, the next golf season. Jim Michael Cabbage is online. If you had any questions regarding the carts, Tom was at the meeting for the authority. If you have any questions.
Didn't we buy them on the lease agreement with, with option to purchase?
We did purchase them. They are ours.
But we did after leasing them.
Yes.
For a period of time.
We had a five-year lease on them. They are in their eighth year. Perry, Mike, or Jim?
Yeah.
Twenty-two will be their eighth year.
Twenty-two will be their eighth year.
And that was, that was a five-year, technically called a lease, but it was a dollar buyout at the end.
Okay.
So the new carts being purchased will be, will have a turn-in value as well. So we'll be turning ours.
Question would be, would there be an advantage to buying them outright, saving some of that lease markup anticipating a eight-year or so lifespan?
The, the price tag on seventy-two carts could be close to three hundred thousand.
Yeah, and over five years, we're going to pay three twenty-something, three thirty-something?
Probably. We've never purchased them outright. We can certainly look at that when the bids come back.
Yeah, I think we should. We might need three hundred for something else, nonetheless.
We would know. This would be actually a twenty-twenty-two budget. When would the bill come down?
Probably the fall of twenty-two, depending upon how we structure the lease. Or if we pay it cash, it would be due in April when the weeks accept delivery.
Of twenty-twenty-two?
Twenty-two, yeah.
Okay, so we can, we can budget one way or the other. We can talk about that actually during the budget process and kind of strategize one way or the other.
Right.
Or even strategize a buyout up to a certain dollar amount, and then if it comes in higher, go with the lease or something like that.
And am I hearing that the gas have longer longevity?
The gas carts we have were just kept just because extras.
Okay.
The carts that we're, would be getting would have ion? No. Different batteries.
Hybrid?
No.
Lithium batteries.
Batteries.
Oh, okay.
So there's less electricity. They charge faster.
Okay. Data the art.
Yeah, yeah. Right now, the, the current carts have six batteries, and all six have to get replaced when they go start going bad. And it takes almost a full day for them to be charged.
You know, again, because of the excellent condition and the township finances, you know, we can decide to get to, to bid them out and then choose whatever financial option is the best for us. You know, really, it's a good, good situation to be in, so it's definitely, definitely needs to move, move forward with.
With you both on the recreation, the finance, and that, I'm sure we're going to be able to figure this out for budget season, so.
We'll figure it out.
The bids will probably be open beginning of October, Perry.
Uh, yeah, we, if authorization, we, we can bid them in mid-September and, and have the answer before the budget season starts.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything from the audience? I'll reword the motion just a little bit. The motion's authorized bidding the lease or purchase of a new fleet of golf carts for Four Seasons Golf with April twenty-twenty-two delivery, as discussed. So do I hear a motion? Most from Mr. Bennett. Do I hear a second? Second, Mr. LaFever. Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Bennett.
Hi.
Mr. LaFever.
Hi.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Hi.
Mr. Russell.
Hi. The eyes have it four nothing.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our Industrial Development Authority to fill vacancies. It's Harry Kinzie, Larry Ulrich, and John Spangler.
So the, the Industrial Development Authority has a vacancy because Dennis Garringer had to resign because he is now appointed to the zoning hearing board. So I reached out, as instructed by the board, to the applicants that we had interviewed for all the vacancies in planning commission and zoning hearing in spring, I guess that was. And I also reached out to Dr. Kinzie as well concerning a potential interest because he has expressed interest in expanding his needs, right, or his use right now. Right now, he's on the pension review board. So those are your three choices. They've all three been contacted. They're all expressed some interest. Dr. Kinzie's here, so.
That's usually a smart move. Any discussions of the board?
And actually, this term runs till the end of the year, and then you, the week up for reappointment. He's fulfilling Mr. Garringer's position.
Well, what made you, if you don't mind me asking, what made you interested?
Dr. Kinzie asked for information, the articles of incorporation for the authority, as well as some past minutes. And I asked Dan Blakenher to go back maybe six months or six meetings for minutes. He had to go back to twenty-eighteen to get six. So, and they're coming. They'll be out, out tomorrow. So it, they don't meet very often, but they do have an important purpose.
Dr. Kinzie has served on the pension board conscientiously, and he wants more action, if you will. I think we should give it to him. That'd be my.
It's got me sold, having, having worked with him too, so. So is, I entertain that as a motion there, Mr. Bennett? And it'll be second from the chair. Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Bennett.
Hi.
Mr. LaFever.
Hi.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Hi.
Mr. Russell.
Hi. The eyes have it four nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm almost scared to say we're flying through the meeting, but we are in the old business. Okay, seeing none. We have no new business on the docket right now. Manager's report.
So it's a kind of a short report compared to the last one. I, I did want to make note of, I really don't have any additional updates on Centerville Road. We're moving along with that. Nothing significant happening there. Church Street paving, however, that was listed, is listed as a one twenty-seven twenty-two bid opening date. They have, PennDOT has changed that. It's a PennDOT project for resurfacing. They have changed that to one construction season to two construction seasons because they're having problems getting the concrete for the culvert. It's going to take an eight-month lead time. So they plan to, in twenty-twenty-two, they plan to correct the curve in the road. And then in twenty-three, they'll put the box culvert in and pave and do the sidewalk and curb. So that's a change.
We know when they might actually let it. I mean, obviously, January let of twenty-twenty-two is actually a bad let because that means they're paving April, May, June. We're at the twenty-twenty-three date, and since there seems to be a little flexibility right now with the schedule, maybe we can see if we can get a April let, which would make a summer paving instead of a.
They, they already have restrictions regarding the school year.
So we're, we're not going to, okay, perfect then.
Yeah, they do, and we are having a meeting the end of August with the school to make sure they're aware of this schedule change.
That's awesome.
So, yeah, that's already in hand. Old Roarstown Bridge Projects moving along, Farmingdale Road. There, we're still waiting for the HOP issuance and the finalization of all the grant documents. We've gotten two grants for that project, so they will take a couple of months to get signatures and distributions and everything else. So that, that's still looking like it's going to be a spring twenty-twenty-two project. State Road is almost done. New Enterprises is getting their wearing course down. The ramp, all ramps are now open. Dairy Road Bridge, that, that grant has been submitted, so we'll see what happens there. Industrial Development Authority, we took care of that. ARP funds, we are waiting for a admin finance meeting, probably the end of August, beginning of September, to start discussing how that's going to be handled. Regarding group reports, we had an MS four stormwater committee meeting on Monday. We, my goal for that meeting was to prioritize stormwater projects in anticipation of the ARPA money because stormwater is a, a significant allowed use for those funds. So we walked through a couple of options and scenarios, and DMA is going to come back to us with some cost estimates. But right now, it's looking like the golf course, the Nistley Road basins, which we talked about earlier with the rezoning, the, the golf course bank stabilization, and maybe Indian Springs might be priority number one. We also have a small issue with Dorsey and Hill Air regarding a drainage pipe replacement. It's a fairly small project. A very large project, an expensive project, will be the Harrisburg Pike ditches. There's one now that runs parallel to Harrisburg Pike, and then the other one runs kind of up Centerville towards the back of the properties. So that, that's going to be a significant dollar cost. Other areas that we discussed was Marriott Pike behind the homes between Stony Battery and Centerville. Some additional road work in Randy, in the Randy Road area. We had done the, the two ends. We need to do some, pay attention to some of the work in the middle. Brubaker Run is also on the radar between Glenbrook, Glenbrook and North Lawn, which some stream stabilization needs to occur in there. The Public Works also met on Tuesday. We discussed the difficulties with the HOP issuance for the Marriott, a good intersection. And we are moving, they have recommended that we move forward with the vacation of a portion of Catherine Street, which is a dead-end street in Roarstown. It dead-ends to the railroad. So that's going to be on your future agenda for consideration. Talked about sidewalk maintenance. Right now, with the Church Street resurfacing, PennDOT is requiring us to do a maintenance agreement that says to PennDOT that the township will maintain the sidewalks and curbs. The problem with that is if snow removal or ice removal now falls to the township, so we have to modify our ordinance to. Move that responsibility to the homeowners. So. The agreement will be on your agenda, the maintenance agreement, and then a modification to the sidewalk ordinance will also be on your agenda. To accommodate the snow and ice uh maintenance. Uh let's see what else.
Mrs. Switzer, does the will the property owners for that be notified?
That the ordinance will include all sidewalks and curb in the borough in the township.
Okay.
That that's a responsibility that you're gonna have to replace, remove snow and ice from your sidewalk. At this point, the recommendation of the group is not to list a timeframe that that has to occur. It's just that you are responsible as a homeowner to remove the ice and snow if you've got sidewalk in front of your house. Um P P and L, uh Perry is working with P P and L and we're going to be replacing about. Four hundred uh streetlights and moving them to LEDs. It's gonna realize about a six or seven hundred dollar a month cost saving to the township. It's probably gonna be several months before that occurs, but uh the process is is working forward. There was a Central Lancaster County cog meeting on the twenty eighth. The most significant thing there was East Pete has agreed to be part of the L I M C in twenty twenty two. Also, I met with a Windstream representative to discuss how Windstream can help. The township cover gaps in coverage in terms of uh internet service. Currently, Windstream does not have has very little service area in the township. They they touch. The Raffo side of our township and they would like to move in to the township. From that side of from the from the north side. And what they're gonna be doing is is running fiber optic lines. There apparently was an F C C auction. That listed census tracts that they could auction or get be awarded and they've gotten a couple. Uh the deal is that those census tracts now have to get serviced. Internet uh fiber optics. They're gonna be providing one gig of service. In order to to service those census tracts, they have to run the fiber optic lines. So they're gonna be picking up customers along the way. So while Chantel and Comcast are on the south side of two eighty three. Windstream will give another option to the people on the north side of two eighty three.
Good.
And all this is supposed to occur within six years, according to to the Windstream representative. So it really sounded very good. She did ask. Uh or she didn't ask, she. Uh alluded to the fact that she might be coming back to the township for some funding assistance. She's also indicated that the county is looking at funding assistance for these types of things, so. Kind of keep an eye on what the county is talking about in terms of what they're gonna be doing for broadband countywide. That's the end of my report.
Any questions for the manager? Okay. And looks like last thing is public comment. Come on forward. You know the drill. Yeah, I guess, yeah, and the microphones so they can hear you.
Brett Canaro, one oh nine Clover Circle. Um I've been here twenty six years now in Landisville. And way back then, they started talking about this bridge that was gonna happen. And I don't know how many countless meetings there were and how many supervisors you've gone through and how many managers and and all this stuff and. It's finally happening. It's just like it's like you go up there and you're like, wow, this is like, this is awesome. So congratulations to you all. And I just wanted to make a side note about Mr. Beck. Like, a lot of times those things are up there and like, you know what's going on. So he has to kind of like explain things so that like. We get a little bit of a gist here in the audience and I'm just thankful that like, you know, you kind of explained it and like, we kind of get it. I don't need to know the details, but I just wanted to say thank you for the time that you take. Explaining things to us out here because otherwise it's just a big picture up there and we're just wondering what's going on. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canar.
Thanks for coming.
Any other public comment?
I have a comment for the board.
Go for it.
I'd like us to consider. What has happened at the NOOK. I don't believe the township. Has direct liability if something more significant than this would happen. However, we do have a leadership responsibility. And in today's world, um it could turn into a legal liability and difficult situation. Uh there's two areas I see. Behavioral pandemic in this country and the one is on the roads and byways. The other is between refs and spectators at sporting events. And that's what happened, I believe, here at the NOOK. And it's unfortunate there's a deteriorating respect for referees and umpires. And sometimes maybe back the public. It goes both ways, but nonetheless, it is a problem. I'm thinking that it would be appropriate for the township. To advise Spooky Nook, Mr. Beiler. That we believe he needs much more significant security for events like this. As I heard reporting from the chief, there were like six security people for thirty courts and process. Just not enough. And something like a recommendation. That there be at least one security person for each active court. And half that many. Roving so that they can respond to situations like this before they escalate, hopefully. I don't know that we can demand it. I'm not suggesting we demand it, but I think it would be wise if we are on record that we have encouraged him to do this.
What says the rest of the board at this point?
Well, as as a referee, I appreciate the uh the words from Mr. LaFever in support of the officials. That that have to deal with this kind of thing and and on some level, I think he's absolutely right. Um I don't know how many officials were there that day, but but um I think. We should make perhaps make an effort. Uh to ask them to review their policies and procedures, uh particularly for these large events. But uh because I. It's necessary in today's world to deal with uh the things that come rolling at us.
Looks like Chief wants to speak. We'll throw him in right as the authority experts.
I just wanted to uh clarify and also to add a comment. And I did have a conversation with uh Mr. LaFever. I know the NOOK had about six armed people on duty. Um and I don't want to speak publicly of their security protocols and what they have in place, but the the tournament also had. Uh staff assigned to each of the ports. But I don't know the extent of that. Uh we are going to be meeting with them to review their security plans. If you recall, we helped them set them up back in two thousand and thirteen. We're gonna review them again and and uh make some recommendations, just like we're gonna review our response and we're gonna have a joint. Fire, police and EMS uh review of how we handled things so that we can improve on areas and we can look look uh fondly at areas that we handled well. So. Um I I also appreciate your point, Mr. LaFever. Um I don't know that we have any control over. The security of an of a business, but I can assure you that from the police standpoint. We intend to meet with them and look at areas that they're doing well and look at areas where they can kind of support a little bit. But I do know that the tournament that was there had people on each port. Um I don't know how many at this point. We're still looking at that. Um and also while I'm speaking, I also like to thank the board for their for your continued support. Uh not only in word, but indeed and in financial support. So uh it means a lot to me personally. It means a lot to the guys. And and this incident at the NOOK the other day. Was was classic. Six thousand people running out of the building and four officers going into the building uh looking for a shooter. So. The 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 team of officers that went there initially, I'd feel did an outstanding job. Um and staging the resources of police or of of actually additional police and fire and EMS uh nearby in the in the uh. You know, thankfully, we didn't have a need for it, but they were ready to set that foundation for a a long term response. For rescuing victims and doing an investigation and recovery and everything that goes with it. So. We certainly were feeling a lot of stress that day. And and lastly, I'd like to um commend uh Diane Garber. She was able to step in and take the press off of my my back. Because as you know, they always are demanding of your time and want information and to try to beat social media and. Um I didn't have time to do deal with that. I was involved with other things and my P I O was out. So I gave her some parameters about what she could release for the police and I think she did an excellent job. So. She's not here, but I'd like to thank her publicly. Sorry if I twisted your motion long term, but I just wanted you to have that background before you made any kind of a motion.
Well, not for the sake of argument, but I would submit that there's a significant difference between armed security and s- staff for the event. And should there be an active shooter? There again, there could be that need. I don't like it. I'm not promoting it. I'm just saying. It's something we should anticipate and I think it would be appropriate to encourage and in your meetings, I'm sure you will. Encourage Mr. Beiler to do the right thing. Um you also shared that he subcontract or lease this is the facility to an outside entity. Again, that's a red flag to me for management and control.
And I think that's com- a common practice for the large facility like.
It may be, but it's still a red flag.
I can pass those on to you as well, to them as as well on your behalf.
I think maybe just a suggestion is not necessarily tonight for us to make policy statements. You guys, we have a public. Safety committee and we have a police chief who is investigating. Maybe we let the chief have his internal means and then you guys are the two of you as a public safety group. Where the police chief can review the findings and then come back to the board with some recommendations.
And it's it's for me, it's it's kind of, it's, I don't think that is proper for me to discuss a private business security plans. I know what their plans are. The plans that I've seen on paper. Um and and I think that that. All things considered, when you have six to eight thousand people fleeing for whatever reason. Um although there were eleven injuries that I'm aware of. Uh when you consider the percentage of six to eight thousand people, I think we were extremely fortunate and people did what what law enforcement asks in a situation like that is to flee. Uh or to hide. And people did what they they needed to do. It's hard to control with four officers initially, but we quickly had the full amount of support from state police. Um and municipal officers from all over the county. Uh so it was. In the end, I'm hoping that it was a very good drill for us and for them to improve on.
It's amazing how fast that. Concern flew through that building and over into the. Balloon and and caused all that it did so fast. People just really reacted.
We're still, we're still working toward a conclusion on that. We'll continue to work, but again, I don't want to discuss investigation in public.
That's right.
Be comfortable with where we're at right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Good job.
So I I would just like to speak to that. I I think that the chief has a good game plan with it and I like uh. His approach as well as I know Mrs. Garber and the chief and the fire departments have worked. Uh for quite some time to put together a good emergency plan uh for that facility. Um and so I'm thankful for that. I think they've done a good job with that. Um but I'd also like to point out that the NOOK. Is a vital component um to our business community. And I think they've done a good job over the years. Um this is an instance um in which. Maybe something could have been done better, maybe it couldn't. And I'm sure they're gonna review that and and get to the bottom of it, but I do think we should exercise caution here and patience. Um and you know, let's wait till we get all the facts. Um before we make a motion and um. And again, I think the NOOK has been a good partner to the township. Um they've been a good partner to the community. They've been a great resource for young people. Um and I think they've done a good job. So I'd like to give them the benefit of the doubt at this time and and let's just wait until. Everything comes in. That would be my approach.
Any other public comment? Okay, see none. It is seven forty five and we will adjourn our forty five minute long meeting.
I think this is yours.